All right, at this time I'd like to call the order, the Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, City of Vandahlia Council Meeting to Order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as in the world.
During our study session, Mr. McDonald requested that Ordinance 20-23 be presented as an emergency ordinance tonight, so I need a motion to amend the agenda.
To move.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley, a second by Councilwoman Farce, that we amend the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries six zero. Council, you've had an opportunity to review the council special meeting minutes of August 1st, the council study session minutes of August 17th, the council meeting minutes of August 17th. Are there any comments or questions? Being none, they stand approved. We have no communications, petitions, or awards. We'll move on to the public hearing. Council is required by the city charter to hold a public hearing for all ordinances in their second reading and emergency ordinances. Seeing as we have an emergency ordinance on the agenda this evening, I'm now going to open up a public hearing. If any individual wishes to speak or give testimony regarding Ordinance 20-23, please come forward, state your name, address, and your comments. Are there any comments in the listening audience? Don't believe so, but Darren, if you want to give me a sign, okay, thank you. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearings. Next comes the city manager's report. We have no information items, but we do have an action item. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for an action item for a sidewalk bond extension at the Brown School Woods. This is something that was reviewed at the August 17th staff meeting in regards to the, I'm sorry, at the August 17th workshop. There's a request received for a one-year extension to complete the sidewalk construction for eight remaining vacant lots in the Brown School Woods subdivision. The dead, new deadline for completion will be September 15th, 2021, and a surety bond is in place.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve the sidewalk bond extension for Brown School Woods, Section 4, for one year until September 15th, 2021, as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce, and a second by Councilman Follak, that we approve the sidewalk bond extension as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
What just happened first?
Reverse that.
We reversed it. I thought your voice sounded lower. We couldn't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. At this time, I got a little ahead of myself, so I'd like to back up and go to item number seven, which is comments from interested citizens. If anybody in the audience watching online has any comments, if you would please state your name, address for our record, and your comments, we'd appreciate that.
Hi, this is Holly Wiggins. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to remind everyone that if you've got citizens that are having issues with paying their utility bills, specifically their electric bill, have them visit our We do have added payment plans that go up to 12 months, and those two, the 12-month plans do not require an immediate payment, which allows them during these COVID times to take over their arrears and spread them over 12 months and not have a down payment for that. So it takes one less worry off their plate. And I did forget to state my name and address, Holly Wiggins, 660 Castle Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Is there anyone else that would like to speak or make a comment? Okay, being none, we'll move on, and we'll get back on track. Item number nine is old business, which we have none, and that brings us to our first resolution of tonight, which is Resolution 20-R-51. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution approving the shops at Northwoods, Section 3, Platte.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. MO Northwoods LLC is requesting the replat of Lot 2 in the shops at Northwoods, Section 1 subdivision. The requested replat would result in the creation of an outlot that totals 0.9183 acres of land, or 40,000 square feet. This proposed outlot would not have frontage on a public street. However, there is an existing easement that ensures access from the lot to Northwoods Boulevard. The planning commission reviewed this at its August 11th meeting and voted five to oh to recommend approval of the requested replat with the following conditions. Number one, the deed to Lot 4 shall expressly include the right to access the public street through the existing access easement. And number two, Lot 4, with the permission from the sign owner, shall be permitted one off-premise sign panel on the existing highway pole sign adjacent to Interstate 75.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 20-R-51.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Ayers, and a second by Councilwoman Farce, that we approve Resolution 20-R-51 as presented. Are there any comments? Being none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Next, we have Resolution 20-R-52. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution approving a finite financial contribution to the Vandahlia Development Corporation.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. The VDC is requesting a $25,000 donation for a recent grant request that was approved. This amount will be for 25% of the 2020 budgeted amount.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 20-R-52 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce, and a second by Councilman Follak, that we approve Resolution 20-R-52 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. We have no ordinances in their first reading, nor do we have any ordinances in their second reading. We do have an emergency ordinance, which is Ordinance 20-23. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending Ordinance 1804, which amended sections of Chapter 208 Purchasing of the Administrative Code regarding purchasing requirements and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Altshaus.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's come to our attention that Ordinance 18-04, purchasing that was signed by former Mayor Setzer, was a draft version of a redlined PDF in which the strike through and underscored did not correctly translate. Further, it was not the final version that was passed by council. To correct that, Law Director Gerald McDonald prepared an amendment to Ordinance 18-04, which he recommends council passes an emergency ordinance. Ordinance 18-04 increased the city's formal bidding threshold from $10,000 to $25,000. Increasing the formal bidding amount allowed items less than $25,000 to be approved administratively without formal council action. Council requested that language be added to require that council be notified prior to a bid award for an item that is less than $25,000 but greater than $10,000.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we approve Ordinance 20-23 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Woods, and a second by Councilman Blakesley, that we approve Ordinance 20-23 as an emergency. Are there any comments?
I just, I just think it's important to clarify that this is nothing, we're not changing anything that hasn't been in practice for the past several years. It's just a cleanup of a clerical issue, but it also puts us, you know, in line with what other municipalities are already doing, so there's no change in the threshold of what council's having to approve and not, so.
And I can speak from experience for the last couple of years since we adopted this, that the city manager has always informed us of any expenditures prior. So we've been following pretty much the same procedure. We're just not passing a resolution for every single item.
Right, and I wanted to say that all these expenditures have previously been presented to us at budget time. Then it comes back to us, we're informed of it. It just, it just reduces the legislation and the, that type of load on staff, really. And, you know, I'm sure it reduces our time on council floor, but we probably spend a little bit more time in workshop discussing things, but it's stuff that council's fully aware of and has previously supported.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. We have no reports from boards and commissions, and next we have a sign variance at 7200 North Dixie Drive. Mr. McDonald?
I have nothing on this, other than it's just the variance for the, I think this is the FNS signs, if I'm not mistaken, that we discussed earlier.
Right, we should go on to Mr. Altshaus. Just to give the description.
Okay, this is a variance for a sign at 7200 North Dixie Drive, in which Paul Daphner is requesting approval to allow the installation of a new 70-square-foot sign at 7200 North Dixie Drive without bringing two non-conforming freestanding signs into compliance. As we heard earlier, the two existing freestanding signs on site are non-conforming due to height, area, type, and nonexistent landscaping bed. The zoning required, zoning code requires that a non-conforming sign shall immediately lose its non-conforming designation, must be brought into compliance, or removed if a permit is issued for any additional sign on the lot containing a non-conforming sign. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to oh to recommend approval to allow the larger freestanding signs remained, and recommend denial of the variance to allow the smaller freestanding sign to remain when the 70-square-foot wall sign is erected, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the sign panel of the larger freestanding signs replaced with a blank face. Number two, the sign panel on the wall sign advertising FS Worldwide is replaced with a blank face.
Okay. Since this is a variance, we would like to open up a public hearing, so if there is anyone that would like to comment on this variance, watching online, please state your name and address for the record and your comments. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to deny the variance for the non-conforming sign at 7200 North Dixie Drive.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak, and a second by Councilman Blakesley, that we deny the sign variance at 7200 North Dixie Drive. Are there any comments? Being none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
No.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion to deny variance passes six zero. Five to one.
Five.
Five to one.
Five to one.
I'm sorry. Five to one, sorry. Okay, next we have a variance for signs at 780 Northwoods Boulevard. Mr. Altshaus.
This variance for 780 Northwoods Boulevard is where an applicant, high-tech signs on behalf of Premier Health and Northwood Shopping Center, is requesting approval of multiple variances for the purpose of allowing two freestanding signs at 780 Northwoods Boulevard. First, the applicant has requested a variance to allow two freestanding signs to exceed the permitted maximum height and area for driveway entrance signs. The requested signs are 26.5 square feet in area and 7 feet 8 inches tall, where the code stipulates that a sign, signs at driveway entrances or intersections may not exceed three square feet in area or four feet in height. Second, the applicant has requested a variance to allow two permanent off-premise signs, where the code defines a permanent sign as a sign that's permitted by code to be located on the premises for an unlimited period of time and design to be permanently attached to a structure or the ground that is constructed of rigid, non-flexible materials. The two permanent driveway entrance signs are located on the property at 780 Northwoods Boulevard. However, the signs advertise and direct patients to businesses located at 600 and 680 Aviator Court. Both signs were erected without a permit. In addition, the signs were installed without the construction of an exposed stone or brick brace, brick base, and a landscape bed. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this variance, please state your name, address for the record, and your comments. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve the variance signs on 780 North Boulevard, subject to commission conditions stated by the zoning board.
We discussed what we needed two of them in the study session.
I know.
You're going to re曲act it?
This allows both of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I want.
Do I have a second? Okay, failed to get a second here.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to amend the variance request and approve a variance for one freestanding sign that exceeds the permitted maximum height and area for driveway entrance signs, with the stipulations that were approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals for that sign.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Follak, and a second by Councilman Blakesley, that we approve the variance for the sign at 780 Northwoods Boulevard. However, we amend it to only one sign and the other conditions that were listed.
That is a fine motion. I assume the rationale would be as stated in the study session, where you discussed it before.
Correct. Correct.
Both these signs are up, right?
Yes.
Both these signs are up.
Right.
So one would come down and be removed.
All right, are there any other comments?
And as far as the one sign that would not be in compliance can be removed at the applicant's discretion, whatever sign they choose.
All right. Thank you. Call the roll.
Counsel, I'm sorry, Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
No.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries five one to approve the sign variance at 780 Northwoods Boulevard with the amendments that we've discussed here tonight for having one sign and the other stipulations by the boards and commissions. Next, we have a sign variance for 680 Aviator Court. Mr. Altshaus?
Okay, I believe this goes in line with what we just discussed. This one at 680 Aviator Court, high-tech signs on behalf of Premier Health, has requested multiple variances to allow a freestanding monument sign where freestanding signage is not permitted on properties without public street frontage. Aviator Court is a private street. The freestanding sign, which was erected without a permit, is located approximately 2.5 feet from the property line, where five feet is required. The sign was constructed without a base of exposed brick or stone, and lacks a landscape bed, where both are required by code. The sign also features a tenant sign for Compunitet, which is located at 600 Aviator Court, and is therefore an off-premise sign. The Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed this request at their August 12th meeting and voted four to zero to recommend approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the subject sign be modified to include a base of exposed stone or brick. Number two, the subject sign be modified to include a landscape bed in compliance with the code. And number three, no business may advertise on the sign that's not located at 600 or 680 Aviator Court.
All right, thank you. Like to open up a public hearing at this time. If anyone in the audience would like to speak regarding the sign variance at 680 Aviator Court, please state your name, address, and your comments for the record. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the sign variance at 680 Aviator Court, subject to conditions of the BZA memo.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley, and a second by Councilwoman Farce, that we approve the sign variance at 680 Aviator Court with the conditions that were noted. Are there any comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Next, we have a variance for a fence at 543 Kenbrook Drive. Mr. Altshaus?
Thank you, Your Honor. Brian Kramer is requesting a variance to allow a six-foot-tall wooden privacy fence in Zone A, where 42 inches the maximum height permitted. The applicant was approved for a fence permit in May. However, the fence was not installed in the location shown on the site plan. The Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed this request at its meeting on July 22 and voted three to one to recommend denial.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak regarding the variance at 543 Kenbrook, please state your name, address for the record, and your comments.
Hi, my name is Jessica Kramer. I live at 543 Kenbrook Drive. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, please.
I was with my husband. He is currently at work, so I chose to speak on our behalf for the fence. When it was denied previously, we had went through some, some discussions that were held in the same council room, and I'm not sure if the same members are present tonight, so I'm not sure if everyone knows exactly what had happened in the last city council meeting. There were some comments made about how it affects the, the appearance of the neighborhood. We took the liberty to drive around to different areas in our actual neighborhood. We drove down five or six different streets. I found six different fences that come to the front of the house, and I don't know if that's exactly the issue, or if that's because it's in the actual zone of my neighbor. In the last city council meeting, I brought the petition of the neighbor that's next to me, as well as the other members that are around me as well. We've had nothing but good comments about the fence, how great it looks. There was a comment made in the last city council meeting of the concern of it sagging. I'm not sure if this was mentioned or not, that the fence is heat and pressure treated. We paid for pretty expensive wood to make sure that that didn't happen. We do plan to be here for a good amount of time, so if that does choose to, you know, if that's sacked or anything like that, we do have every intention of replacing them. I do have pictures, and I don't know, I can't exactly present them today, due to us seeing online, but I can always send them to Mr. Marlowe, if that's something that I can do. Of other fences that are in the area that come to the front of the house, like we said in the last meeting, you know, it has added value to our house. It adds more usable yard space for us. It would be, you know, difficult for us to pick everything up and move it back. I know the other option was for us to decrease the height to three and a half feet in that fifteen, or that 13-foot permitted area. So I'm hoping today that we'll be able to get everything approved, but I don't know how likely that is, so I just wanted to say that, you know, we went around the area, found some other places that, you know, quite frankly, the fences look worse than ours. A lot of them are sagging, a lot of them are vinyl, you know, they're not very appealing as far as like to the eye. I know one of the councilmen had said something about driving around the neighborhood and looking at it, and said that it was, you know, not as, you know, appearance appealing as it should be. So I'm hoping today that we get some different results.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make a comment? Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Have a motion?
I move that we deny the variance for fence 543 Kenbrook Drive.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Ayers, and a second by Councilman Follak, that we deny the, the fence variance at 543 Kenbrook Drive. Are there any comments? Being none, please call the roll.
As, I don't think we discussed this one in the study session, so we should, I don't remember if we did or not.
Last week, last time. Last meeting, we did.
Last, we, we, we should, for, at least for the record, say what the basis of the denial is, just so that we have it clear.
Mine would be the fence was, was erected contrary to what was issued by the city's, the permit that was granted to the applicant, and they erected the fence contrary to what was permitted by the city.
Same here.
Okay.
Good.
Agreed. We just need to have a rationale stated contemporaneously with the decision.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments?
I think that's in line with what the BZA looked at as well.
Thank you.
Same rationale.
All right, call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, was that the, I didn't hear what you said.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes to deny the variance at 543 Kenbrook Drive. Next, we have a variance for a deck at 812 Myers Court. Mr. Altshaus?
Andrew McAlwes is requesting a variance to allow 480-square-foot deck 19 feet from the rear property line, where 26 feet is required. The code requires that porches and decks meet the minimum building setback requirements for principal structures if they extend across more than 25% of the width of the rear facade. The required rear yard setback in the RSF-3 zoning district is 35 feet. However, this property received a variance in 2000 to allow rear yard setback of 26 feet. The Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed this request at its meeting on July 22 and voted five to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open up a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on the deck variance at 812 Myers Court, please state your name, address for the record, and your comments. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the variance for the deck at 812 Myers Court.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak, and a second by Councilman Blakesley, that we approve the variance for the deck at 812 Myers Court. Are there any comments? Being none, call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Next, we have a variance for a home addition at 284 North American Boulevard. Mr. Altshaus?
Thank you, Your Honor. Sharon Brener is requesting a variance to allow a 280-square-foot home addition that would connect the home to an existing detached garage. The detached garage is non-conforming, as it overlaps three parcels, and is located approximately one foot from the side lot line, where five feet is required for accessory structures. By attaching the garage to the home, it becomes part of the principal structure. Principal structures are required to be set back from the side property line a minimum of 7.5 feet. While the encroachment into the side yard is not physically getting larger, the degree of the nonconformity would be enlarged. The Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed this request at its July 22 meeting and voted five to zero to recommend approval with the following condition. One, three parcels of land located at 284 North American Boulevard be consolidated into one lot.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open up a public hearing for the variance for the home addition at 284 North American Boulevard. If anybody would like to speak on this, please state your name, address, and your comments for our record. comments for our record.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Brenner. I live at 284 North American Boulevard. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would just like to let you know that I was required to do a survey to concurdate the three feet parcels of land into the one plot, and that has been completed. I would also like to clarify on the amount of footage from the property line. After the survey was completed, I was given information that it's actually three and a half feet from the property line. So I'm going to be about four feet, I guess, after the addition to my home is put on. So I'll be about four feet in the variance there. And I am just hoping that the approval will come through, so that I can put the addition on the back of my home. That's all I really have to let you know.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brenner. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this variance? Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion that we approve the variance for the home addition at 284 North American Boulevard.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Woods, and a second by Councilwoman Farce that we approve the variance for the home addition at 284 North American Boulevard. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion carries six zero. Next, we have a variance for a fence at 929 De Sales. Mr. Alt House?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jason Pearson is requesting a variance to allow an eight-foot-tall privacy fence in Zone A, where the maximum height permitted is 42 inches. The Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed this request at its August 12 meeting and voted four to zero to recommend approval of a six-foot-tall fence, rather than the proposed eight-foot-tall fence, to be located flush with the building line.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing for the variance for a fence at 929 De Sales. If there's anyone in our audience that would like to speak or make a comment, please state your name and address for our records and your comments. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the variance for the fence at 929 De Sales Street for a six-foot-tall fence to be located flush with the building line in Zone A, parallel to De Sales Street.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Ayers that we approve the variance for the fence at 929 De Sales, with the following condition, that it be brought to six foot and bring the fence forward 15 feet to the front of the house, that was acceptable by the BZA. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion carries six zero. Next, we have a substitution for non-conforming at 217 South Dixie Drive. Mr. Alt House?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bison Investments LLC is requesting the substitution of a non-conforming use in order to transition an office into a personal service use for a barber shop. The mixed-use building is zoned residential multifamily and maintains two office spaces on the first floor and four residential apartments on the second floor. Neither office or personal service uses are permitted in the residential multifamily zoning district. The zoning code provides that a non-conforming use may be substituted for another non-conforming use if no structural changes are required and the use is the same or more restrictive. The Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed this request at its August 12 meeting and voted four to zero to recommend approval of the use substitution, subject to the following condition. A shared parking agreement is signed by the property owner of 217 and 237 South Dixie Drive and approved by staff to ensure adequate parking.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open up a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak regarding the non-conforming variance at 217 South Dixie Drive, please state your name, address, and any comments you may have. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve the substitution for non-conforming at 217 South Dixie Drive, subject to the condition presented.
Soggy.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Vice Mayor Ayers that we approve the substitution non-conforming at 217 South Dixie Drive, with the amendments that's been provided. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion carries six zero. Next, we have a variance for gravel parking at 6750 Old Webster Street. Mr. Alt House?
Thank you, Your Honor. Brown and Bill's Architects, on behalf of Montgomery County, is requesting a variance to allow a compacted gravel parking lot, where parking lots are required to be a hard, paved surface like asphalt or concrete. The 6,500-square-foot parking area was installed without a permit and lacks required striping and wheel stops. The Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed this request at its August 12 meeting and voted four to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak regarding the variance for the gravel parking lot at 6750 Old Webster Street, please state your name, address, and your comments for our record. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the variance for the gravel parking at 6750 Old Webster Street, as approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Soggy.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Ayers that we approve the variance for the gravel parking at 6750 Old Webster Street, as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion carries six zero. Next, we have, council, you've had the opportunity to review the Planning Commission meetings of August 11th. Are there any comments? Being none, we will move on to council comments. Mr. McDonald? Mr. Alt House?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Farce?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Blakesley?
Just a couple, just one real big comment was, thanks to Planning Commission and BZA, obviously, you heard a lot of variances tonight and other issues for the Planning Commission, and just want to let them know, we appreciate their work, and their work is very helpful when it comes time to review these and make informative decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Woods?
Yes. I need to move to excuse Councilmember Lewis from this evening's meetings.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Woods, and a second by Councilman Blakesley that we excuse Mr. Lewis from all of tonight's meetings. Call the roll.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?